And Carolyn Dobbin seconded. All those in favor, let it go on the say and I. Agenda stands as it is. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. There is one error in the minutes. On page three. Under Randy Jernigan. The third paragraph down, it said, "A motion was made by council on Randy Jernigan and seconded but..." I think that should be "by." A small adjustment, but...
What page?
Three. Under Randy Jernigan's counsel. The third paragraph.
Small paragraph.
I got you. Okay, I got you.
And it's supposed to be what, Felita?
It should be "by" instead of "but."
Okay. Okay.
I make the motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
J.C. Trippett made the motion to accept the minutes as they are with the amended part and David McGowan seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next thing is the proclamation of Red Month. A whole month, okay. I'm supposed to read this into the minutes, so... Proclamation to declare in February 2022 as all in red month in the town of Wilson Mills. Whereas the well-being of our community is of paramount importance and maintaining excellent health among citizens. February marks a one-month countywide heart health awareness campaign entitled All In Red presented by Johnston Health and and organized by the Johnson Health Foundation. And whereas in the United States, North Carolina and Johnston County, heart disease is the leading cause of death among men and women. And whereas heart disease and stroke rank among the top five health priorities in Johnston County per the 2019 Johnston County Commission Community Health Needs Assessment Implementation Plan. And whereas per this Center of Disease Control and Prevention, about eighty percent of deaths from premature heart disease and stroke could be prevented by changes in physical activity, diet, education, maintenance of common medical conditions, and whereas all in red is an opportunity to increase heart health awareness while addressing the growing needs of local heart patients. And whereas the All In Red campaign invites all Johnston County residents, business owners and businesses to participate in this event by wearing red on February 4, 2022, National Wear Red Day, and on running a red promo or fundraiser in February. And whereas the financial challenges of a heart patient are enormous, all funds raised within this campaign period will benefit local heart patients through the Johnson Health Foundation's Heart Fund. And whereas on this day, we recognize heart disease and stroke survivors, those battling the disease, their families, in the course of loving care, encouragement, and applaud the effects of our medical profession to provide quality care. And now therefore, the Honorable Felina Bird in Wilson Mills Town Council do hereby proclaim February 2022 as all in red month businesses, industries, citizens in the community to support and participate in this event. Does anybody have any comment? I would just like to say that my husband has severe heart disease, and so I am very much in favor of any campaign that promotes us being aware of our hearts and what is needed.
Give Donald our best, but...
Yeah, he has some... Okay. The next thing on the agenda is a sewer update. And I don't think... I think what we have next in our packets is the letter from Mr. McGowan on a letter to the citizens. David, I want to commit to this. This is an excellent job. There are just a few things.
That's fine. But before, Mayor, if I may, if I may?
Go ahead.
Real quick, when I had this proofread by Leanna and we did three, I rewrote parts of it three times with her suggestion, so there were some changes. On the last one, I didn't make the changes that she indicated should be made, and she went ahead and had it printed up with her little comment in there, so on the bottom of page two, where it talks about baseball fields in the works, that was her comment, so just scratch that out. That's not supposed to be there.
What was that again?
So the last paragraph on page two regarding what's there to do in Wilson's Mills, the second sentence to the end talks about baseball. Take that out. I was supposed to have corrected that.
Okay.
Then the next one, the only other one that she had for me was the top of the next page, the first sentence, take out the part about calling it the Pumpkin Festival, et cetera.
Okay.
Town festivals and other town-sponsored events, et cetera. So with those two changes, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, the, when you speak about, on the top of page two, when you speak about the healthcare, the name of the hospital is Johnston UNC Healthcare and not Johnston Health.
Okay, where'd it go?
It's the second line on the second page.
Johnston, okay, Johnston UNC Healthcare.
Uh huh.
UNC.
There's one in Clayton and one in Smithville.
Okay.
So I think we need to...
Healthcare, one word?
No, it's two words.
It's two words.
UNC.
UNC Johnston, yeah. UNC Healthcare.
And the second part in Clayton, there's Wake Med Clayton, is that, is that okay? Leave that?
Yeah, but you need to put that there is one in Smithville and in Clayton because Johnston...
Okay, so I'll put...
Johnston UNC Healthcare has two hospitals.
All right, so I'll put in parentheses after that, Smithfield and Clayton located.
Right.
But it's not Wake Med.
No.
Right.
But there is a Wake Med unit in Clayton. There's a clinical care unit in Clayton.
Yeah, I, you know, if nobody minds, I'd like to leave that in there because it's a rather a lo- I have nothing to do with it, but it's a rather
Yeah.
large clinical care facility.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to put, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like a fast med, so I think, and then if you take Ambu entrances, so I, if you don't mind, I'd like to leave that.
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
Yeah.
Okay, now, the last page, David?
Yes, ma'am.
When you, when you put in there, you can also find us on Facebook at The Wilsons Mills. That next sentence, read it.
Okay, this site will have a lot of information you might need to include, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. The site will have a lot of information you might need to include a town newsletter.
To include.
You might to, you might need comma, comma after need, to include a town newsletter. And there we go in to talk about the quote-unquote town prior that we're going to put
Right.
electronic mean.
That, that was just a little bit, the way it's working right there was just a little bit confusing, so if you put a comma there, then you'll have a stop, then that'll work.
Yeah, my, my...
But I think the information you put in here is very, very good.
Okay.
And I think it's, I think that it's something that we need to get in the hands of Wendy and some of our officers and you when you're out visiting people, but the people that are coming into the community, this would be very, very helpful information.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for your comments, and when I wrote it, I just, I wrote it as a new citizen, and because when I talk to people, I know what their questions are, so
Right.
I thought I'd address it like I'm sitting down and talking with them across the table, nothing wrong, so...
Right, and I think it's very good, and I think that...
David, so David, David, did you run this by the Police Department? Is they okay with distributing that also?
I ran, Leanna's taking care of that, that's her thing. She'll, she'll coordinate with the Police Department.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm not running it by everybody. I'm just running it by the one person who needs to fan, to spread the word there, and that's Leanna, so...
Well, I, I would like to be sure that we have some of them available because I would like to have some, because when you go out and you see people, I think it's a good thing to have something to give them.
Yeah, just, you know, have a little file in your car in the back, pull one out, but I'd like, I prefer to do it on a front and back on the first two pages and then
Yes.
so it's very, it's only three pages, and let's see what happens with it. If people have other questions, we can always modify it, so. Tim, do you get along with it, like it or not? Mr. Brown?
Oh, yeah, look, I read through it, I thought, I thought it was, it was, it's a great, I want them for a print, but putting this stuff online, I think it's ex- it's an excellent idea.
I want to welcome people to Wilson's Mills, and we got so many of them coming in, so, anyway, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your comments.
All good.
I think it was well done.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, the... Financial statement, financial report?
Did somebody say they had a question?
Yeah, I got a question for you.
Yes.
I haven't had a chance to read over it all the way, but is there something we can add into that regarding people with animals as far as registering them in the town?
Yes, good point, because everybody's got not one or two, not one dog, but two or three, so yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll add another paragraph in there regarding registration and, and town, just a brief thing on town ordinances, like, you know, hey folks, you know, maintain control of your pets at all times, you know, that sort of stuff, but registration, okay, I'll do that.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that move in and like they ask me stuff, and they're like, well, we had no idea that you had to register your animal within Wilson Mills.
Yeah, good point. I'll, I'll put that in tomorrow and ship it down to Emily.
Well, thank you.
So Emily, I guess, once we these changes are correct, with Leanna being out for a few days, I'm, I'm one who likes to get things done, so if I get this to you tomorrow, okay, by email, you can start printing these things up and we can start getting them out?
Yes, sir.
Because Leanna is already...
I, I can, but today is actually my last day on my rotating shift, so I will not get into it till next Wednesday, because I will not be here.
Okay, so Patrick, um... We'll get it, we'll get it.
We're also, the plan is for Leanna to be back next Wednesday as well.
Okay.
So that'll be a good team effort.
That's fine, we'll, we'll get it done. These are, these are weird times, so we'll get it done. We've done it without it for all these years, we can do it a few more days.
Yeah, but I for sure, yeah, I'll for sure do it. I just won't be here to do it tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir. I'm there every day to meet me, so just come see me.
The next thing on the agenda is a review of financial statements. Does anybody have any question? I don't have an answer, but we'll try to get one. Yes?
But, I may have, it may have broke out, but the sewer updates, do we have any sewer updates?
From the... Oh, what kind of updates?
It was under, it was under Leanna.
No, we don't have any.
Okay.
We don't have any. We're still, we're still dealing with that, working with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Are we on financial statements matter?
Financial statement, yeah.
I don't have any questions. Is Sherry on tonight or not, Emily?
No, sir.
All right, I would just like, as, as a member of the council, I'd just like to make a comment toward Sherry, and that is, I am so thankful and so grateful that we've got Sherry doing what we've done, especially after reading what Goldsboro was going through with no tax audits for the past three years, and they're now under a watch list. And here we are, that's the twenty-sixth largest town in North Carolina, and here we are, we are coming through right at the very top. We are gold. Thank you, Sherry.
Yes, and I...
And I, and I echo that as well. Please, please share that.
I will.
We are very, very, very proud of her and the work she's doing for us. So if no one has any questions about the financial statement, Wendy? Is Wendy on?
Yes, ma'am. Um, you have our monthly report, the best that I could do it. A lot of that I had to do while I was working from home, so I did not have all of our numbers, but I'm hoping next month we can go back and incorporate everything and we'll get it settled.
Wendy, I have, I have two quick questions, Wendy, if you don't mind. Under the first Parish Ridge pre-warranty reinspection schedule, what's happening at Parish, Parish Ridge to warrant this?
Um, Parish, before we can take over anything at Parish Ridge, the streets, sidewalks, anything, their infrastructure has to be the way it was supposed to be on the construction plans. There is a major problem with erosion control and stormwater runoff out there, and we have met with them twice. And this last time, they were told exactly what they have to do to fix it, and if they don't, we're keeping their money that they put up as a bond for making sure everything was done correctly.
Does part of the stormwater problem relate to the fact that their, their retention pond is about fifty feet lower than the elevation of the development itself? I mean, it's a huge, like a big, you know, well back there.
The, the biggest problem is they didn't go in and stabilize those steep banks like they need to. And all the water that we've had, we've had erosion. And if you want a really good hike, like you were in the mountains, go to Parish Ridge and walk down to the bottom, down by that stream, and then turn around and try to walk back to the top.
That's what I was referring to, is that part of the problem, and you just confirmed it, to the erosion on those steep banks.
They, they didn't grade and stabilize like they were supposed to in the beginning. The first time we met, they were told exactly what they needed to do. They still didn't do what they were told to do. They went out and did it on their own, like they wanted to, and were not accepting it, so this is their last chance.
And if they don't, if they fail to comply and we keep their bond, I mean, it's certainly not, it's far from over. We have to then go in and correct it, correct?
We use their bond money to correct it.
Is there sufficient bond money for something like that?
Yes, we collect bond money at a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of what our engineers say it would be at the time that they put it under bond.
And what happens, out of curiosity, if the bond money is, is not sufficient? Is litigation then?
Um, that could possibly be an attorney question. The town may have to pay it out of pocket, and then I don't know if we could go after the developer to get the remainder of the money back.
Okay.
Try for that not to happen. We try to estimate really high when we estimate these bonds.
Counsel, are you on?
Uh, to me, the one thing we would be able to do, we would tell them that we weren't over, you know, take over the streets as long as it wasn't done correctly.
We can't.
Yeah.
We can't, we, we have to take them?
No, we, we will not take them over until everything is fixed.
That's why I say, that's, that's something to hold them on too, because then they would have to do maintenance of that road until they get it to the point that we are satisfied with what's going on.
Right.
Is, is Counselor on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Hi, Gabe. Going back to my, my quick question, if the bond is not sufficient, have you, is there a case history of having to enter into litigation against developers with, if the estimate was insufficient?
You know, to be frank, I'm not sure. It's certainly something that if it comes to that point, we would look into it. You know, if the bond was insufficient, then, and the town incurred an expense due to the development, then, and had to pay out of pocket, then, you know, I would certainly believe that the, the equity would be in favor of the town being able to maintain litigation against the developer, but I, I haven't encountered that issue previously, so I'd have, I'd have to subject to check on the case law, if there's a statute for that.
All right, thanks, thank you.
And maybe it's like what, it's like what Wendy said, most of the time, the bonds are high enough that that's not a problem.
Yeah, I had a quick question to follow up on that, and I, I forgot what it was now. Oh, oh, the question is, has, has Parish Ridge been turned over to the HOA yet? Officially?
Um, it has, but the developer is still responsible for
Okay.
everything until we officially take over their street.
Okay, my last question, go down about three or four sentences or entries from there, and the taller property, has the taller, has Frank Toller sold that property?
He has not sold that property yet, um... I've been contacted by three or four different people on that property. So I'm not sure which way they're going to go with it just yet.
Okay, so he's, he's, he hasn't put any plans in there with respect to what, commercial or resi- is it, what's the zoning? Is that light industrial or agriculture residential?
Um, it's commercial.
Okay.
Your future land use plan, it is commercial.
Okay.
Commercial interest, and I've had some residential interest, so which way it's gonna go.
All right.
Where's that at?
Frank Toller. You know, you take Wilson's Mills Road out to the east towards Clayton, and you know where that huge pipe was, was inserted just before, just where the Mills is, where Bartlett Building is? His property's right across the street from that. It's the boy house sitting up on the hill with the big red barn.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he's got, I think he's got a hundred and ten or something back there, I don't know. Okay, I'm, I'm done with that, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is that we need to call for a public hearing. Wendy, would you like to explain this, or?
I, I can, yes, ma'am. Um, back in June of 2020, the council heard, called for a hearing and heard everyone on the annexation of the properties on Strickland Road. Um, council's majority vote was to annex both sides of Strickland Road. There was multiple parcels. It has come to the town's attention that the meets and bounds for those properties were not correct at the time they were recorded. So we need to call another public hearing, and Gabe, please speak up, Mr. Dusablon, please speak up if I'm misspeaking. We need to call for another public hearing. Um, and then we'll need another vote. I have received some new meets and bounds. I have learned how to plot those to make sure that we have the correct parcels this time. So we just need to go through the formalities of it again for Crescent Mills. Their developer is, is really ready to get this done. They're really antsy right now about the whole situations. One side got annexed and the other side didn't. The funny part is, there was a little bit of each parcel on each side of the road. So we're not sure how everything happened. I don't know that we'll ever figure out how everything happened, but what we have now is the correct ones, but we do need a hearing next month so that you guys can open that hearing and then vote on it, please.
Yeah, I mean, and also just, you didn't say anything wrong. I agree with everything that you said. I just want to characterize it a little bit and say that, um, you know, the applicant wanted to annex the entirety of what has now become Crescent Mills Development. And so that, that included, you know, portions on both sides of Strickland Road. So this is not a matter of, you know, the town wanting to annex more, wanting to annex less. It's just trying to get to accurately describe and annex and record the, the appropriate property that the developer requested to be annexed. So the issue then is that in order to, since it was already an ordinance that was signed and, and adopted by the, by the council, in order to amend an ordinance, we have to, that has to be done via ordinance. And in order to adopt an ordinance, you have to have a public hearing. This is not a, an additional public hearing on the question of whether to annex or not. The, the annexation has already occurred. It's just, it's a amending ordinance to amend the error in the meets and bounds. And in order to enact an ordinance, even if it's amending a prior ordinance, you have to have a public hearing. So that's the purpose of the ordinance, will be just to correct the meets and bounds, and it will be effective retroactive back to the original annexation ordinance that was adopted by the council last year. So that's what, that's what it is, that's what the purpose is. It's really just nothing more than a procedural step just to make sure that that can't be attacked later down the road as, that, you know, if we were to just try to handle it at a staff level, it would be, you know, potentially subject to a challenge of not being, of not being effective, so we just want to get it right, and want to get it back in front of the council, but like I said, it's just to correct the, the error that was in the original ordinance and there's no, the town's not going to de-annex it, they, they don't have that authority, so that's all it is. I just wanted to offer a bit of, you know, clarity about what we're doing.
Any more comments?
I, I got a question. Now, this was before, before my time, so what, 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 what type of housing are we talking about? I think you say Crescent, Crescent Mills.
It's housing and some town homes.
Say that again, Wendy.
Single-family homes and some town homes. If you want to swing by town hall, wouldn't they? I'd be glad to get those plans out, so you'll be familiar with that, Mr. Brown.
That sounds good. That sounds good.
And Tim, this public, this public hearing will not change anything except the meets and bounds of what was annexed. I mean, it's not anything else. We're not changing.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, you know, size of homes and stuff like that.
Yeah. Because all we're doing is correcting the annexation.
Okay.
Any more comments? Okay, we're going...
I make a motion that we have a public hearing on the annexation ordinance amendment for Crescent Mills.
J.C. made the motion?
Second.
David? Second. The motion is that we will have a public hearing on February the 21st, 2022 in order to correct the annexation of these properties. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Emily, do you have anything?
That'll be at a regular meeting, right, at 6:30?
Yes, yes.
Just for the, just for the minutes, so the reflect...
Okay, I'm sorry.
That was gonna be my question.
Yes, at our regular meeting at 6:30, I'm sorry.
And no, ma'am, to answer your question, Mayor, I don't have an events report. We haven't had an events meeting since before our Christmas tree parade due to us closing here, so...
Okay, uh, the Police Department Chief, are you here?
He's muted, hold on just a second.
Okay.
Chief, you've got unmuted stuff, there we go.
All right, can he?
Yes, yes, Chief.
Yeah, I'm here. Um...
Go ahead and do your report.
I don't have anything to add other than what you have in your packet. Um, I think there was a modification to one of the policies that we had. If you have any questions, just ask.
Chief, before we get to the policy change, one quick question. You don't, you don't have any active participants in the community service program. Are there any thoughts as to, and this, Patrick, this involves you, I think, in light of the recent personnel changes, the town is really getting littered again. Specifically Fire Department Road, the things where people pass through all the time seeing it. Sutherland Road, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not able like I used to do to go out there and pick it up myself, but any plans here, any...
Me and chief, uh, me and chief spoke about that today and he's got two that come in last week uh, that we're planning on. I need to call at the beginning of next week to set up them coming in.
Okay, yeah, cuz what I'm, I'm reading a lot of, of comments from people on various social media, local social medias and the complaints are once again arising about the extreme litter. And if you recall about a year ago, it seems the state and the county really, or the state, I should say, kicked it into gear and started cleaning up seventy and things like that. And it was really very impressive, but those efforts seem to have fallen by the wayside. And I can't help that except encourage them to write to their representatives and the D O T, but with respect to Wilson's Mills, that's where my heart lies. And Fire Department Road, parts of Wilson's Mills Road, things like that where the it's transitory routes, you know, Sutherland Road too. And, and I, and my, one of my questions is, um, and I, I don't know if it's happening, but there's litter being blown about, at least say the development behind my house, cuz I can see it and on windy days. It blows it everywhere and it's now hitting, like I said, Sutherland Road. So you think there's any chance we could talk to the developers, Wendy, or anybody to go out and help clean up this mess? I mean, it's their community too.
We can talk to them, but I'm really not sure that there's gonna be any teeth that we have to put behind that unless we can that it's coming from their development.
Okay, that's fine. That's alright.
I can send an email out though.
Well, don't worry about it. I'll just leave it up to Patrick and the chief and hopefully it's community service folks will get out there and do some work.
If we could get some of them and, and get started on it, it might help some of the situations.
Yeah, Powhatan Road, I'm sure. I, I went down it the other day and it's, it's starting to look pretty crappy too. Okay. Um, chief, you and I had a discussion uh, earlier this evening regarding, uh, let me go, let me go back and on your activity report, uh, motor vehicle accidents, you highlighted fifteen. Where are the majority of these accidents happening these days? I'm guessing seventy and Wilson's Mills Road.
Yeah, we've seventy and we had some that run into the barricades along, along seventy, but mostly it's just the intersection of Swift Creek and uh, Wilson's Mill Road intersection with seventy.
Okay.
That's where the majority of them happen.
Okay, well, mayor, if you don't mind, you wanna move into the uh, request for the general order modification?
Yes, sir. That, I think that's where we need to go and uh, I don't see a whole lot of changes that the chief is making in this order, but um, it seems we're changing, uh, taking out the supervising position and putting in the chief or lieutenant in all those positions. Is there a reason, chief, that this is, is initiated that we want to do it?
Um, yeah, there's been some legislation coming down here lately. Um, I think it's S B three hundred where across the state, really across the nation, um, they've had people kinda enhance their, their complaint and, and policies, internal policies like that for complaint investigations. Just kinda shoring it up, basically. Taking out of a supervisor's hand and just putting it either in lieutenant's hands or my hands to make the decision.
Um, if I may, I, I, I know you're bracing yourself, chief, because this is maybe a little bit lengthy and, and self-serving, but um, as, you know, as you and I have had discussions before, uh, because police work is in my heart, you know, that's other than flying in Vietnam, police work was my love. I, I loved every bit of it. So I pay very close attention to it. And as you know, my son is twenty-one-year narcotics veteran up, up north, so I, I look at police work and I just, I love it. So it, it, it's where my heart lies. So this has special interest to me. And more than just passing special interest, when I was, again, I know it was, everybody's thinking about, geez, you were, you were on the department fifty-two years ago. Policies change, people don't change. Okay, people are the same. Back then and now, policies and types of policing and the way we do it has changed. And, and I'm, I'm with that. I understand that. That's why I don't, I don't say anything to you about, you know, the way we used to do it in the old days, but here's the thing, I want you to look at the, and keep this in mind, look at the first page. And under the second paragraph, policy, I'm just, I highlighted one thing and I'm not looking for a change. I want you to keep it in mind because I'll move on from there. Under the policy paragraph, the last, part of the last sentence says, protect employees from unwarranted allegations arising from lawful discharge of their official duties, okay? Protecting our officers. And I'm not talking physical, I'm talking uh, legal, those sorts of things. So when we go down this line, when I, when I was working and carried a badge and a gun, two and a half, two years of what I did, I was selected and I didn't volunteer, I was asked to go on to become a detective in the special, the internal affairs division, special investigations. There were only nine of us for a thirty-five-hundred man department. And we did, we, we investigated the breaking of the law. Not excessive force and discourtesy and things like that. So I, I do have experience in this and this, people have not changed, as I said. So if you look at the next one, it says here, I, I have a couple of, a couple of suggestions. Under paragraph one, receiving complaints, go down to where it says anonymous complaints from citizens who wish their names to be held in confidence will be accepted for investigation. So in other words, somebody could just pick up the phone and call you or, or call the sergeant or somebody and say, officer so-and-so smashed my head into the cruiser. You have to investigate, correct? That is a lawful, that is a valid complaint and now you have to dedicate time and resources and bring in that officer and, and, and maybe talk to that citizen if they want to. My suggestion would be to add in here um, anonymous complaints from citizens, um, wait a minute, uh, who wish their names to be held in confidence. Okay, and add to that in the end, in the case of alleged criminal misconduct. So what I'm saying here is if someone alleges that that officer, you know, was parked behind JD's and was watched at three o'clock in the morning, seen pulling, you know, I don't know, bags of chicken wings or, or ice cream or cokes, stealing from somebody, burglary, out and out burglary. That, that does not have to be, um, that, that is, that can be an anonymous complaint. That's fine. Correct? Do you have any prob- I don't have any problem with that, but I, I, I think it should say something, citizens who wish your health and names in confidence for investigation in the case of criminal misconduct. On the other hand, if it's a case of excessive force, whereas he smashed my head into the cruiser when he locked me up, that cannot be an anonymous complaint. That is a one-on-one. He, who struck John? He said, she said. That, I think, has to be uh, not, not anonymous, but that has to be written out. And if you go back to your next, to the last page, you have your form. Now, the form says here at the very bottom, and this is the complaint form, it says, I certify that to the best of my knowledge, these statements are true. I acknowledge the making of false statements is punishable by criminal penalties. Okay, now that's for an excessive force, okay, or a brutality complaint. Let's just, let's just look at it real quick and say, this guy is, uh, he's smoked out, he's high on something, he's drunk, whatever, and, and he alleges this complaint after he's been locked up. You've got to, you've got to look at this and he signs this thing. I suggest that when this thing goes before a court, which it could very well do, we need a level of protection in there for the officers in that I think that person should swear out his complaint or her complaint to a, and sign in the presence of a notary, okay? Not just sign this thing because any ambulance chaser worth his salt is gonna be able to stand before a judge and go, your honor, you can't bring him up on perjury charges. He was drunk, he was high, whatever, just throw that stupid thing out and the whole thing is, is worthless. And the, the point I'm trying to make is with S B three hundred that's coming out now, which is the uh, critical incident statewide database for officers facing uh, supervisory and, and revocations. Their name's gonna be public. So this guy, all he has to do is say, he smashed my head into the cruiser. That data, that complaint has to go into this database in accordance with the law the governor just signed. And now this fictitious complaint that this guy just doesn't have to swear to, cuz he was drunk, is gonna be on a public database affecting this guy's career. What I'm asking for is that excluding, excluding criminal violations, but excessive force, brutality, discourtesy, they have to swear to it or a notary. And I want our officers to have that additional level of protection. This guy's gonna sober up and he's gonna, if we can say, you gotta come in within twenty-four to forty-eight hours and swear before Wendy, before Emily, whoever's the notary of the day, that this happened. You swear before a notary. When he sobers up, he might come back and go, you know what? I, I was drunk. I don't wanna do that and I'm not gonna swear to anything anymore and the whole thing is dropped. Give the officers that simple level of protection of a notary. What I'm trying to say is if you look at the definition of a notary in accordance with the state statutes, notaries are public officers of the state of North Carolina charged with protecting the public from fraud and forgery. Why can we not insert them into this when we do have notaries on hand? If somebody wants to make a complaint about an officer using excessive force, swear to it and not just on a little piece of paper signing. That's all I'm trying to say, chief. I want a level of protection in there for our officers because now their name is gonna go into a state database. And I just want these, these folks that are gonna throw these allegations that are officers to, to look at it hard.
Gabe?
I'm trying to protect our police. Go ahead.
Gabe?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Is, is this something that we can require?
You know, um, I, I would ask if, if this is something you want to explore to give me uh, an opportunity to look into it. I'm, I'm familiar with S B three hundred. Um, I don't know that it requires reporting i- into a statewide database of all complaints, but only those that, that are for critical incidents um, resulting in death or serious bodily injury. Um, and of course then you also have Giglio, um, which is um, shorthand for a case but that established that in, if an officer or, or the prosecutor rather is aware of an officer um, issue regarding their ability to testify, um, you know, and their, uh, whether, you know, if they, if they basically get found in the internal investigation to have, have made a falsehood, um, then that, that, that should be revealed to the defense to, to impact the, the credibility of the officer. So that information does have to be reported to a statewide dat- database as well. Um, but I'm not sure that either of these two um, scenarios are triggered. Um, or either of those two, those two reporting issues are triggered in the scenarios that Councilman McGowan la- uh, laid out, so. Um, but as to requiring uh, a complainant to come in and then sign something for a notary, um, I certainly understand the, the rationale behind it. Um, you know, on, on, right on its face, I can't say whether it, it is or isn't something that you can require. I mean, I don't know that there's a legal issue by, to, to requiring it, let me put it that way. Um, you know, if somebody says, hey, an officer smashed my head against the cruiser, I think you kinda need to know who it is. You can't say, well, you know, officer A, did you ever smash somebody's head against the cruiser? You know, I don't know. You kinda have to have more information to, to explore that, but um, I don't know if it, it can be anonymous, you know, just, just in order to allow you to even investigate it. But um, but I, as far as, you know, hey, sign date and, and, you know, this, this is grounds for perjury and and that, that aspect of it, I, I don't know right here sitting now whether to say, yes, you can require that. Um, I don't think S B three hundred had said anything about that as far as um, policies go. I don't recall seeing that, but um, you know, I, I might have to, to say, let me take that under advisement and, and talk to the chief and, and figure out whether that's something that we can do before you, before you undertake it.
Right. That, that was my question because I don't want us to say, okay, this is what we want to add on here, this is what we want to require. And then in a later date, we come back and find that we can't. It's something that would be prohibited. Uh, I'm not saying that it's not a good idea, but I'm just saying that we need to cover all our faces.
Yeah, and that's exactly what, what you're saying is, you know, we wouldn't want to put something in there and then, you know, like I said, I just don't know now whether there's, there's case law or something that says you can't, you can't, you have to allow these to be anonymous, you know, or anything to that effect. The chief might know that. I, I, I just, I've not run across this, so I'm not, I'm not.
Chief, chief, is this something that you have, you want done tonight or can we wait and let you and Gabe talk it over and make sure that all these things are, are looked at?
Honestly, I don't, I don't see the need for it for a couple of reasons. It's, I mean, it's gonna be viewed as just another obstacle for somebody who wants to complain or file a complaint. It's just one more obstacle they have to go through. I can name a dozen different instances where this is gonna be inconvenience for that person to now have to go and get it notarized. I mean, what if they mail it in? They don't wanna come down to the police department. They wanna send a letter, sign it and fill it out, fill out the form online. Um, there's too many different ways where they can complain. But now the state, it has to be notarized. And to me, it doesn't give any additional protection because, I mean, if they file a false police report, they file a false police report. I don't know what notarization is necessarily gonna do for it, other than potentially scare them.
True. It's that extra level of protection, chief, and I, I am all.
We can still charge them either way, whether they have it or not.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
It's extra layer to scare them.
No, it's not, it's not designed to scare anybody. It's, 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 it's designed to prevent, you know, Joe out there from just willy-nilly throwing complaints around. And let me, let me take it a step further.
But that happens anyway. That's gonna happen. That's what majority complaints are anyway, are willy-nilly complaints.
All, all I'm asking is, and it's not an inconvenience, the inconvenience is getting locked up in the first place, but having to come back for courts and bonds and everything else. You know, I, I just, I, I'm all for the officer a- and protection, protecting our officers uh, from having these complaints thrown at them. And instead, today's litigious society and the way the people are anti-police out there on the street, they're gonna do a lot of different things to inhibit the effectiveness of our police. And I think if they wanna have a, a serious complaint, a serious complaint that he smashed my head into the cruiser, come on in and sign it before a notary, because this is, this is something that could affect the career of any of these police officers. And let me take it a step further. Let's say they're going to court for uh, someone else, an entirely different case. Any defense attorney can sit there and say, officer, are you or are you not under current investigation for excessive force? Yes, I am. Well, I, I, I don't, I don't, and, and you're saying, I, I don't trust anything that you're saying right now. You've just, you haven't perjured yourself by any stretch, but you, what you're saying is, is tainted somewhat because you're already under investigation for maybe two or three, who knows? I'm trying to say, if that person wants to, is serious about an allegation, you just come in and stand before Wendy and you've signed, you've got the paper, now you sign it in front of a notary and you know, now you're sobered up, you're not high and you know darn well that if something happens down the line, you can go to jail. You know, they just sign that little form, they'll go, your honor, I was, I was drunk. I didn't know what I was doing.
Well, if the complaint happens at eight-thirty in the evening.
Come in within twenty-four hours to, twenty-four, forty-eight, whatever you wanna do. When they sober up, when they're out of jail on bond, whatever, come on in and make that complaint, cuz this is a serious life-changing event.
Well, still, what if the complaint happens at eight-thirty, nine-thirty in the evening?
What about it? They come in two days later and they, they fill out the, the paperwork?
No, they came to, they came in at eight-thirty in the evening and want to file a complaint against the police officer.
Go ahead. They can, they can fill it out, but it's not gonna be notarized until our notary is in. That's all. Come back the next day.
Well, now they have to come back again.
They, so what? If they're serious about this?
I mean, that's just an extra obstacle. It's not necessary.
It's not an obstacle. It's not.
It's true.
Chief, it's a protection, it's a protection for the officer, chief, and you know it and I know it.
There is no protection. It isn't.
These officers need protection, chief.
On the form, it has on there.
Crazy people out there are firing allegations.
Okay.
I want our police protected. Simple as that. I'm for the police officer. I'm for the guy that's working this.
Okay, we have got this before us and we have got the um, recommendations of the chief. We've also got the recommendation for Mr. McGowan to add in uh, a clause that says they have to have it notarized. What does the rest of the council think? What do y'all know?
The only thing that I would add is, is like, go ahead, Mr. J C, I'm sorry.
The only thing that I would, is, is like, go ahead, Mr. J C, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you go, you go right ahead.
I was just gonna say, the only thing that, that I really, I, I always have a problem with, with any complaints is the word anonymous. Um, I just, I, I, you know, I think if, if you're man enough, a woman enough to complain about an officer, about me, or whatever, you, you ought to be willing to put your name out there, so I know who my accuser is. Um, that, that was the only thing that I read that, that I really, that's just a personal thing for me.
It, it, um, from a speak, you have to accept anonymous complaints. A lot of times, um, it's a private citizen that has nothing to do with it. They're telling something that they saw another officer do to somebody else. They're not really involved, so that's an anonymous complaint. They're not, they're not a subject to the complaint or anything involved. They're just, and quite honestly, a lot of crimes are solved that way when people give anonymous information. That's just part of it, I mean, and you have to investigate those.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, anytime you, I, it is, I, and you're right. I mean, it's just anytime I see anonymous complaint on a, on a, on a police officer, you know, I, I see what Dave is talking about, you know, just trying to protect the officer, because I don't want anybody to, i- if an officer's not, not doing their duty and doing it with the professionalism that, that the badge did, did requires. Um, uh, you know, there, there needs to be discipline, but, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't, I, it's just a fine line between, you know, somebody just all of a sudden, oh, he gave me a ticket yesterday, so I'm gonna file a complaint against him, get him investigated. You know, I don't know how often that happens. Um, you know, I, I just, I, I just wanna make sure that, that we do protect our officers in the best way legally that we can. Um, although, you know, you know firsthand, chief, it's, it's, that's almost hard to do now, but um, but that, that was the only thing, and that was just, just really a personal issue.
The complaint that you just described, we get complaints like that, but those are, they are complaints, but those don't even make it, you know, past, you know, uh, me or LT. They just don't go very far. Because we can tell most of the time if they're frivolous, but if it has some merit to it, um, those are investigated. And, you know, if they file an actual report on it, I mean, they're subject to uh being charged for filing false police report if we find it's not correct. So having a notarization of it, I mean, I don't, I don't see, you could do it. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it. I don't know how you could have forced it, honestly, because I don't know how we can make someone, they wanna file a complaint. I said, no, you have to get it notarized, or I'm not gonna take it. That, that's not a good looky, because they may say, I don't wanna get it notarized. I say, well, I'm not gonna take your complaint. That's not a good look.
I, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
I got a question for the attorney. Once this person finds this thing down here that says, I hereby assertive, that to the best of my knowledge, this statement made herein are true. I acknowledge that the making of this statement is perhi- is possible to punishable by criminal penalty. Whether you have that notarized or not, he's still at fault if you find out that he's done it illegally, right?
Right, yeah.
So why do we need, why do we need to make that guy come in and get it notarized? Well, when he signs this thing, he's acknowledging that if it's not true, he is punishable by criminal penalties. I mean, I don't understand where you, where you're, you're adding an extra round to this, that I agree with the chief. We don't need it, because uh it's, it, it, we're protecting our people. When we, when he signs that complaint, if it ain't true, he's, it, it's punishable, whether he, whether it's notarized or not notarized. I mean, you know, when you put your name on this complaint, you know, e- even if it's anonymous, once it's proven true or false, if it's proven false, it's punishable. Is I'm, am I right, Mr. Attorney?
No, that's, that's true. You know, no, uh, having a notary uh at, at, to it would, would not, you know, make it true or, or make sure that it's, you know, not true. The only thing that that would um, would be proof of is that the person who signed it is who they say they are, right? You know, so they would, that, that would be.
Yeah, you know, they're only.
Because.
Say that that's who they are.
A notary does not notarize what the person writes as being true. The notary only notarizes the signature. When a notary, when a notary notarizes a document, I was a notary for years, I did not look at the, what was in the document, because that's not what you notarize. You notarize the signature only. You have to guarantee.
Crime is that.
What you're guaranteeing is that that person is the one that signed it.
The real crime is that they gave that statement to a sworn law enforcement officer. That's the crime.
Right.
If it was not true, if it's found not to be true later on.
How many times have you prosecuted people for that, chief?
Rarely.
Rarely, if ever. Yeah, because they'll stand before a judge and they'll go, ah, your honor, I was smoked out that night. I don't know what I was signing. But if they come back twenty-four hours later and sign it again when they're sober.
Let me say this. You've been charging with perjury or whatever, or filed an false police report.
Right.
Uh, whether it goes anywhere, you know, yeah, it doesn't go anywhere.
All right, let's do this. Let's move on. Chief, we're gonna just set, be, be set to disagree. I, 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 you call it an obstacle, I call it a protection for our officers, and it's of no consequence. It is of no cost to anybody. Oh, it's an inconvenience to Joe's citizen. I don't care. If you're gonna accuse my officer of something, I want you to come in there when you're sober and you're ready to do it and sign it again. That's all. It's a, it's not an obstacle. It's a protection for our officers.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Cancel. What do y'all want to do with this? Amendment to the police policy.
Well, you know my feeling, mayor. I want to modify.
I, I need, I need a vote. Yes, no, maybe so, but somebody, I can't do it. Y'all want to accept it? Y'all want to deny it?
I make a motion, we accept the, this as written.
Okay. J C made the motion that we accept it as written, as.
I second it.
And Carolyn, it's second question?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna need, Carolyn, J C.
Uh.
Uh.
Ah.
Okay, all opposed?
Oh.
Emily, did you get that?
Yes, ma'am, I did. I've got um in favor are Councilmembers Carolyn Dobbin, Councilmember Tim Brown, Mayor Pro Tim, J C Triplet, and in opposition is Councilmember David McGowan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Randy, is Randy not on?
He's not. He's, he's not able to be with us tonight.
Okay, all right, okay. I just did not, you hadn't heard. All right.
Okay, so moving on to public works. Patrick?
Um, you guys got my report, uh, if there's any questions?
What, Patrick, what is, what, what's the animal control calls?
Um, dogs running.
Stray cats, stray dogs?
Yeah, stray dogs, stray cats, uh, dogs running loose, just stuff like that.
And we have a leash law, correct, in the town?
Yes.
So what, what do you do when you respond, when you respond to a call, a stray dog call?
Uh, most of the time, we pick them up and we bring them back to the town. We have holding, we have two holding cages at the town. And then if nobody uh comes and claims them, within like twenty-four hours, we take them down to the shelter.
Uh, what if they come and claim?
Uh, if they come and claim, and there is a charge, uh, that we charge them um for a reclaim fee. And most of the time, if they're not registered, then I go ahead and make them registered before they can take them.
Good.
I got a question for you, Patrick.
All right.
I got, you, you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Do you have one of the things that if they're, if they have a chip in them, that you can, you know there's a chip?
Uh, a scanner?
Yeah.
I do not.
How much would that cost us to get one of those?
Uh, I can check into it and let you know.
Well, you know, sometimes the dog gets away and it, it's not a situation, and knowing, knowing people that uh, if their dog gets away and they've got a chip, uh, that, that, and when they, when you read that chip, it's, it's gonna tell you who the owner is. And that owner's probably looking for it, and most of the time, that owner's not gonna be upset about paying a little fee to get his dog, hi- his or her dog back, because it got away from him. It's not that, you, you know, some people, they just, the dog just gets away from them sometimes. And I know a lot of people don't have the chip, but uh, those who do, it would be good to have that thing, because if you, if you can, if you get that, if you scan that dog and it's got a chip, it's gonna tell you who the owner is, the phone number of the owner, and the address of the owner. So uh, that would save us a lot of time, maybe even keep us from having to keep it in the kennel for three or four days. Now, I don't know how much one of those scanners costs, but I'm just, I'm just saying that might be a situation that we look at maybe doing.
We actually had an instance with a husky that got loose uh a couple of months ago, and it come three miles away, and he was chipped. Uh, but we had to take him down to the shelter and all that to get him checked, and then they had to go through the shelter to reclaim him. But that would, you know, if we had the scanner, we could, you know, check to see if the microchip, and then get them back to where they belong. Which that's also with, with the uh, you know, we give them a tag when they're registered, and if it, the tag has a number on it, and that way I have it in uh a Microsoft Excel spreadsheet, and then I can uh, I can get up with the people and get their dogs back to them.
I would, I would ask you, I would ask you, I would ask you, Patrick, to find out what the cost of one of those scanners would cost us, because I think it would save us some time if we had the, if we had that, if you'd had the scanner for that husky, you would have known who, who owned the dog immediately, you know?
I think that's a good idea.
I don't, I don't know, you know, whether it's feasible for the cost. I, I, I wouldn't think the scanner would cost you that much.
Well, it would be worth checking into it and finding out, and then letting us know what the cost would be. Okay?
All right, I mean, I'm just asking, cause uh, I've got three dogs here, and every one of them have chips.
Uh-huh.
So if, you know, I would want you, if, if one of my dogs got out, and which luckily it hadn't happened, uh, the, oh, they had one times, and I, I would have loved to make, I mean, I got lucky and got it back, but uh, they had, they have chips in it, so if they gonna, if they get lost, if they get out on me, I want you to call me as soon as you can. I don't mind paying the fee to get the dog back, because it's my fault he probably got out.
Well, Patrick can check that out for us and, and let us know how much it's gonna cost.
I'm not, I'm just asking that you check to see what the cost of a scanner would be, so that you could, you know, if it, you can, you can scan it to see if it's got a chip. And if it doesn't have a chip, that tells you that it's probably a stray.
Yes, sir.
Well, it might, it might even be an app on, for, for smartphone now.
Yeah, it might be. There might be one, yeah. So if you'll check into that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you.
Uh, does any councilman have any comments?
I, I do. I, I would just like to say that um while I, I voted uh for the, the police uh,
Policy.
Whatever it was, yeah. Um, I, I just wanna say, David, I appreciate your, your concern, and, and, and I, I, I stand shoulder to shoulder with you on protecting our, our officers any way and every way possible. I was in law enforcement for a number of years as well, and um, and, and I, 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 that, that was not a vote, uh, disagreeing with, with your idea at all, because, because I really do appreciate that thinking outside the box for our officers, and I think we have to do that um in a, in, in a society that wants to litigate everything. So I just wanted to say thank you for that input, um, and, and, and I did understand exactly where you're coming from.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate your, your encouragement.
David, I think it wasn't a bad idea. I just don't think it's a feasible.
I don't take it personal. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did someone say something I? Okay. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Um, before we do that.
Clea, Clea.
Okay.
Clea.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Clea, before we, um, uh, now, I'm getting an operation on the thirty-first of January, so I don't know how long I'll be uh unable, unable to get out and do things, so I just wanted to let everybody, I should be, I should be okay in a week, but, you know, uh, uh, I'm, I'm pretty well gonna be out that whole week of ju- January the thirty-first through March the fourth or fifth, because of the operation, so.
Okay. I hope everything goes okay.
All right, I just wanted to let everybody know. It's not, it's not uh life-threatening or anything, but it is a pretty big surgery.
Okay.
Good luck to you, J C.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
J C, we, I wish you well, and I was just gonna ask, Clea, do, do we need to do any kind of, making an announcement about any kind of special session, closed session or anything before we close out?
No, sir, because we haven't got all the information together.
Okay.
Leanna and I are still working on that, Tim.
Good.
We haven't forgotten any of it.
Sounds good.
We, we're not putting it on the backboard, but we're still working on it.
All right, sounds good.
Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
J C Triplet made the motion to adjourn. Tim seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Everybody have a safe snowstorm coming up? And try to stay safe. There is ice and snow and everything is coming our way.
Good night.
Y'all take this to anything, just let me know.
We'll see you, everybody.
Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Clea. Thank you, Clea.
Good night, everybody.